At pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, roll call and declaration of conflicts of interest, should there be any?
Councilmember Abram?
Here and none.
Councilmember Bixel?
Here and none.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Here and none.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here and none.
Mayor Boukla?
Here and none. Moving on to approval of agenda as posted or amended.
Second.
Your motion is second. We call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abram? Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Boukla?
Yes, passes by. Moving on, we have a few FFA members. If you'd come up here for us, please. Oh, look at that. That's sweet. Yeah, put it right up here. Okay. All right, so we are fortunate to have a bunch of youth here who have done some amazing things and represented Turlock and the state. And actually, what place do we get?
First place.
That's what I'm talking about, huh? Let's give them a round of applause. Now, not knowing each of your names, I want to make sure that I just butcher it completely, right? I think I got Alex right then. Beragon, right? Who's Alex? Okay. And it sounds like we have two. Oh, see, we have Diego, I'm guessing. Yeah, I got this one figured out. There's you. Diego, you got that. Okay. And Vivian? Okay. There you are. See, I'm going with first name, so I won't butcher this. And Isabel, right? All right, there you go. So, we just wanted to make sure that they got the representation that they fully deserved. And I want them to kind of describe what they did, because it's, this is a valuable moment for them to share what they're doing and how important they look when they go off to represent us for the whole state and win. So, first, a round of applause for amazing first place. Are you talking? You want to talk? Who's going to represent? Do you want to do it? You got it? Come on up.
So, obviously, we see everyone, we get first place in the state, but what you guys don't see is the amount of time and the amount of hours that we put into practicing every week to get to that goal. Last year, we placed, we tied for first in the state, so they gave us second, but we came back and we got first this year. And it's a great team that we have. And if you guys don't know, once you get first place in a team, you can't compete in it again. So, we're all moving on to a different team next year, and hopefully we all stay together to try and win another state champ title. So, yeah. So, this award was for the fruit tree judging team winning first in the state. So...
By how many points?
By one point. So, yeah.
Keep people guessing.
It's, yeah, quite an accomplishment. So, yeah. Thank you to Mr. Cardoso as well. This wouldn't have been possible without him. He's a tremendous coach, and he's led us along this entire season. And, yeah, we can't thank him enough.
Super proud. Good job. This is good picture. You guys want to come up for a picture? You got us. We're going to go over here, Chris. All right, Chancellor Young, would you come up here, sir? And the three gentlemen, you guys want to come on up here, too? So, first and foremost, my husband is the chair, but had a procedure, and he's not allowed to drive, and you don't want him here under the influence. So, we left him at home, but he did wish you well and wanted to be here for it. So, this is a proclamation, because he has served for so many years on YCCD and has decided to retire, and we want to make sure that he knows that we're sending a lot of people from Turlock to MJC and to Columbia. And so, we wanted to recognize that the work you've done and that you will be missed. So, this is Dr. Chancellor Henry Young, who has served as a chancellor for the Yosemite Community College District from 2017 through his retirement on June 30th, bringing visionary leadership and unwavering commitment to student success across our region and during his eight-year tenure. He's dedicated himself to strengthening the relationship between the colleges and the broader community, fostering trust, transparency, and collaboration with students, faculty, staff, and local partners. His leadership was especially vital during times of uncertainty and challenge, including navigating the complexities of COVID-19 pandemic, managing a faculty strike, and leading through presidential transitions, always with integrity, compassion, and a clear focus on the well-being and success of students. And the city of Turlock recognizes and deeply appreciates Chancellor Young's contributions to the education, social, and economic vitality of our city, and honors his lasting legacy of service, excellence, and student-focused leadership. Now, therefore, I, Amy Boukla, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Turlock, and on behalf of the entire city council and our residents, do commend and congratulate you on the occasion of your retirement and extend sincere gratitude from this remarkable contribution to education and to our community. You are, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, the city council. I just want to express my personal thanks to the mayor for her support all through the years. She and I, we worked several years ago to try and find a purpose for a plot of land that our district owns in the city of Turlock right off the 99. I appreciate the mayor's effort in trying to explore what options might be available that we could turn that piece of vacant land into something that would benefit both the college and the city. And so, I am indebted to her assistance, and I retire with the knowledge that this has been a great community to work with, and so I am going to miss people in Modesto and Turlock and all the other cities where our two colleges are. So, thank you all once again. And thank you, Mayor.
One thing at a time, one thing at a time, Mayor Boukla. Good evening, everyone. My name is Justin Farkas. I have the honor and privilege of representing the Office of Assemblyman Juan Alanis. And YCCD has been an incredible partner for us and the action that we take up in Sacramento, both on the faculty level and in the administration level. What, as a YCCD grad myself, I'm a class of 2020 at MJC. The dedication that YCCD has had to students, not just pursuing careers in, you know, white-collar work, but in blue-collar work and the trades, it's really unprecedented, for one, but above all else, it's incredibly helpful for the next generation, who may not want to be going into a career where you have to wear a suit and tie. They want to be wearing boots. They want to be turning wrench. They want to be connecting wires, whatever their craft is. And it's just really catapulted young people in our community to make incredible benefits in their lives. So, on behalf of the California State Legislature, on behalf of the Assemblyman Alanis, thank you for that service, and thank you for the commitment that you've given in your tenure with YCCD.
Thank you.
See, I always find it so hard to follow up Justin at these events. He does a fantastic job representing Assemblyman Alanis. My name's Joey Chavez. I'm new here with Senator Alvarado Gill, and it's an honor and privilege to recognize Chancellor Young's not only nine years, 10 years of service with YCCD, but really 30 years of service through academia and investing in California's young people. The senator takes a keen interest in furthering educational opportunities here in the valley and has noticed your distinction here in improving Modesto Junior College, Columbia College, which is included within our district. And, you know, as a Tracy resident, I may be a few hot skips and stones away from Turlock, but I also went to Delta College. I went to community college, and I know the value in seeking education that's closest to home, because here in the Central Valley, we are struggling but are ultimately turning around job opportunities and job growth, thanks to institutions like yourself that you have helped made prosper. So, on behalf of the California State Senate and on the office of Senator Marie Alvarado Gill, congratulations on your retirement and thank you for your service.
Good evening, everyone. Vito Chiesa with Stanislaus County. So, I first want to congratulate you on a very distinguished career. I think that's the most important thing, the way you've ingratiated yourself with business, local business. You've morphed, as we talk about the trades and trying to find where people are necessary. I do want the FFA kids left. I'm sorry to see that, but MJC has the greatest ag judging team in California, bar none. So, I was going to do a pitch for you. So, there were three Chiesa kids, three boys. We're all three in a row. We were all at Modesto Junior College at the same time. I think my oldest brother is a professional student. He still might be attending there. He didn't go on. But we were able to move on to a four-year college. I look at jewels of the valley, and you think of the education system as second to none with Yosemite Community College District, Modesto Junior College, both in Columbia, CSU Stanislaus, UC Merced now. And if we're going to uplift people, it's going to come through education, because it's a great equalizer, always has been. And you've done such a great job at the junior college. And for Columbia, my pitch for Columbia is that I played in the jazz band up at Columbia. They've got a great jazz program. I played at CSU Stan after college, and used to go up there. They have a great jazz instructor. So, but again, the way you've really implemented the business side of trying to talk to Gallo or talk to Foster Farms and see what they need out of a college has been absolutely amazing. I hear it from business all the time. So, again, congratulations on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and our chairman, Buck Condit.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we took care of those, and now Director Moreno's up.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. The item before you today as a presentation is the draft budget for the fiscal year 2526 general fund. So, for the general fund, for the budget process, we break it up into multiple meetings. The first one is going to be consistent of today, where we talked about the general fund and a lot of the funds that go along with it, where next meeting we'll come back, we'll bring back the other funds like municipal services, SRPOA, stuff of that nature as well, and special funds. So, we'll go through the information. So, the general fund and Measure A is what we'll primarily be talking about today, because those are your two primary sources of income as far as sales tax generation. So, one of the things I like to do for the general fund is really look at a forecast and kind of plop it out, what it's going to look like in the future years. Obviously, we're making some assumptions of growth factors. Depending on what the item is, it could be 3% to 5%, maybe higher. But you can see here within the process, we have a balanced budget for the fiscal year projected for 2526, so I'm very happy to be able to relay that information. But you do see that you start seeing the separation between your expenditures and your revenues in the growing years. This is not very, this is common going through the budget process. I mean, our revenues and the overall streams come in differently. So, we reassess and make sure we look at this five-year forecast every cycle. The general fund consists of multiple revenue streams coming in, whether it be from permitting or taxes or whatever it may be. The primary ones are always going to be taxes, though. Your property tax and your sales tax. So, you can see the overall number of just those items put together, about 74%. So, let's look at a little bit more of the detail. So, again, taxes coming up to 74.48% of your overall revenue streams coming in for the general fund. Property taxes, we're projecting to increase about 7%. This, the big piece right here is sales tax. So, sales tax generally in the last couple of years has constantly been growing, but we have seen some downturn in prior presentations of what it overall looks like. So, for the projection that we get from our consultants, we're actually going to be seeing a decrease going next year by negative 1.2%. So, we are seeing a decrease overall. What does that traditionally mean? It does have a large impact. Traditionally, when we see revenues increasing, we're able to grow our expenditures with those. So, when you have one of your primaries actually, I don't want to say dropping off the cliff, but it's saying of kind of a flat line in a sense of the way, you really have to make adjustments to your overall budget, because your expenditures will continue to go. Interest income, you're seeing decrease of $240,000, your total revenues of 64.2 million. So, projecting out our sales tax again, we can see that there is, again, a slight dip in the next fiscal year, but you do see it to start pick up in the futures. So, average around about 2.5% for the next future years. Expenditures. So, the general fund, as you're aware, our biggest primary source of expenditures really is labor. It's going to be a vocal bar budget overall, and you can see that through this slide here, where it's about 81% of your overall expenditures for this category. Some of the highlights that we'll be discussing for the general fund expenditures, all vehicles and equipment transfers were being removed, but we also are requesting that the general fund pick up public safety. The reason we do that is because public safety overall, one, is rebuilding still their fleets. Two, if we push off these items too long, they will financially cost us more in the long run, so we try to hold up to as long as we can. Travel and training has been reduced but not eliminated. Office furniture and equipment has been removed. Supplies has been reduced but not eliminated. All requests for augmentations, except for the ones that have commitments or contracts, have not been included in this current budget. Other miscellaneous accounts has been reduced, but again, not limited as well. So, what does this mean? It means we are feeling an impact. We are seeing some of our revenue streams teeter down because of our sales tax, but we overall, again, have balanced budget, and we're also not impacting services. We're not eliminating positions. We're not holding positions, and we're not freezing anything. So, this slide here is basically going to be your revenues as far as your fund balance or your reserves. So, you can see that we're coming out of the fiscal year '24 with a healthy overall balance. So, we can discuss this at a future date as how our fiscal policy works, or we could discuss it today if you'd like, but we will like to have to bring this back and have some further action when it comes to these numbers. Measure A. So, Measure A, although it runs with sales tax as well, as far as how the patterns work, because it's just a local sale tax, it does work a little bit different, because you're not getting county pull and monies like that coming into it. So, you do see a trend going back up in the future years, just as the other one was. So, you can continue to see a healthy growth within our sales tax for Measure A. This is the general side of it. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Questions?
Just go back to your slide there where you show the last one there. How do you come up with such a steep growth from a downturn?
So, in the consultants, give us a report of what it's overall looks like. You can see striped or large increases at certain points. We've seen it with, when Amazon came in, there was a bunch of large spikes. But again, this is the local tax, so it does shift differently than your other one. So, we can see spikes. You're not seeing large growth patterns. You are seeing, just the way the chart looks, it is increasing, but not to the nature of like 10% or to that degree.
I guess, yeah, I guess that's a little...
I think the chart is a little more.
Yeah, okay.
Just the way the structure looks, yeah.
Well, the question's...
Can you talk a little bit more about our general fund reserve policy, please?
Sure. Our general fund policy has multiple factors in how we utilize them. Basically, the structure is really built in the sense that we use revenues for two things. We can capture them and use them for one-time expenditures, OAL, equipment, capital projects, things of that nature. But the overall structure is actually built for 22.5% that it has to be held in reserves, so that we can continue to make sure that if we do have a downturn, we could write those out.
And so, 22.5% is what we've agreed that we want to save for those, you know, rough years, but we're currently at a much higher percentage?
We're closer to 50. That's correct.
Closer to 50.
That's why we do want to bring this back and have a conversation on how we could utilize these funds.
And I would, you know, particularly put a plug, I know you just asked for questions, but a comment that, you know, looking at the list of some of the things that we're not able to fund this year, because it is a tighter year on revenues, I think there are some items on there that, you know, ARPA funds could be going towards, maybe some Measure A reserves, maybe, you know, that general fund reserve, when we're looking at capital expenses like the animal shelter and equipping of fire trucks and things like that. So, I would definitely like to see us come back to some of those items that can go forward, that can be pulled in with the general fund reserve, but also having a more robust conversation with, okay, that extra, you said, I think it's like 48.5% that we're at now. So, that extra 26%, which is like $16 million that we have, you know, put aside, how are we going to put that out to good use in the community?
And I would kind of piggyback that. I think that it would be helpful for you to kind of give us one-time things that...
Yeah.
I don't want any salary and benefits, because that'll always catch up and make it worse on you. So, if there's items that were not necessarily a need, but not necessarily a luxury, if we can look at those, and it might help us to have a better service to the public, let's see if we can put those and try and pay for those and get things going in a different direction if possible.
Sure, we can definitely explore that. A lot of the augmentations that come through the process are going to be salary-based or some kind of continuous expenditure, so it's not something you want to go to reserves. But there's also other wish lists outside of there that we can potentially look at. Again, we do have a healthy reserve, so it is time to have that conversation.
It's a good thing to have a problem with, huh?
Yeah. Again, balanced budget.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, now is the time set aside for Ms. Packwood to give us an explanation on ELOP. We won't be nearly as vocal as the TUSD meeting out here.
I need my glasses on or off. Good evening, Mayor, council, community. My name is Karen Packwood, your Assistant Municipal Services Director. Tonight, I'm here to provide you a brief update on the city's role in supporting youth, recreation, and care programs, specifically through after-school programs. For many years, the city has proudly partnered with Turlock Unified School District to offer enriching, accessible programs for students and working families. Two of our longstanding programs have been very central to this effort. Our first one is our ACEs program, our after-school education and safety program that is state-funded and offered at six of our school sites, five elementaries and one junior high, with the city handling daily operations and TUSD providing important staff support and space for the programs. In addition, Stanislaus County Office of Education provides program oversight and advocacy for our ACEs program. The second program is our PLAY program, Positive Leisure Activities for Youth. This is a fee-based program, providing structured recreational care before school and after school at additional sites, with the city handling daily operations and TUSD providing space for these programs. In addition, we do have a facility use agreement in place with Turlock Unified School District that they use our facilities and we use their facilities as well. This partnership with TUSD has not only provided safe and engaging environments for children, but also contributed meaningfully to family stability and community well-being. A few years ago, TUSD was given state funding to launch another out-of-school program titled ELOP, Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. These programs are aimed at providing expanded academic and enrichment opportunities beyond the school day. Recognizing our existing expertise and trusted presence on campuses, the district invited the city to serve as an independent contractor to collaborate on the implementation of ELOP through the years. We responded positively and brought forward multiple MOUs to council, which all have been approved. In some locations, ELOP replaced our PLAY program, while in others, PLAY continues to complement the district's efforts. This flexible collaborative model has allowed us to meet family needs while adapting to changing funding and operational realities. Recently, TUSD informed us that they intend to begin operating ELOP internally, beginning this summer, 2025, and continuing into the 2025-26 school year. They see this as a valuable opportunity to enhance its capacity to serve students through internal resources. It's important to clarify that this change is driven by the district's evolving educational priorities and does not reflect any dissatisfaction with the city's contribution through the years. Naturally, this transition will reduce our general fund revenue we've previously received through ELOP contracts. However, it also means reduced expenditures, fewer part-time staff, less demand for supplies, et cetera. However, our ACEs program, which I just spoke about, will remain unchanged and continue serving students at the current six sites. In addition, I'm happy to say that we've already done registration for next ACEs program, and we are full at five of our six sites. So, definitely a need in our community. With these changes, one program that we will no longer be offering is the Before School Care Program, formerly offered by the city in select locations from 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. Securing a staff person to work one hour a day is not a sustainable shift for staff, as we know. Historically, this Before School program was followed by a kindergarten program for students with partial day schedules that allowed that staff person to work a substantial shift. As we know, our part-timers can only work 20 hours a week, so they would work that morning shift of 7:00 to 8:00, followed by the kinder program equating to 20 hours a week for that employee. This is no longer going to be the situation. However, TUSD has indicated that they are diligently working to find a solution that will provide families with Before School options. As we look ahead, we, many families we know rely on the city for out-of-school care and support. Recently, our department has launched a social media campaign to help clarify the city's role on all of this, address any potential misunderstandings, and thoughtfully prepare for successful fall, regardless of what happens. We remain committed to supporting the residents of Turlock wherever possible. Upon TUSD solidifying their plan for the 2025-26 school year, staff will be able to assess the interest and the provided space available on each campus and determine at that time if a PLAY program is going to be needed. We recognize that these changes may create uncertainty for some families, and while the city is not the driver of these shifts, we do want to be part of the solution and maintain open, transparent communication. As always, thank you for your continued support of our youth programs.
Questions or comments for Ms. Packwood?
Assistant Director Packwood, I apologize if I missed it. Did you say how many sites PLAY is offered at currently?
Currently, we only have, for Turlock Unified, the Before School program is offered at three sites, and that's the PLAY program that is fee-based. When ELOP became a program this school year, it started in August of this year. Prior to that, it was partial year because of all of the pieces that you have to get into place, right? So, we started the school year with ELOP. Those ELOP sites replaced all of the PLAY programs. So, currently, every AM kender, PM kender, and after-school program that's not ACEs is ELOP. I believe, to answer your question, I believe there's a total of 13 total ELOP programs that were PLAY and became ELOP.
Okay. And I guess I just ask that to get at, and maybe we can talk more offline, but, you know, is there, I believe there is capacity and, you know, I guess need is the better word, for parents who want that PLAY or the fee-based program. So, is there capacity with space or staff or, you know, whatever needs to fall into place to have more opportunity for that?
So, we have been working with Turlock Unified School District since, for many years, decades, actually, right? We have a great partnership with them. When we met in January, that's when they shared with us that fast forward to... When we met in January, that's when they shared with us that fast-forward to summer and then into next school year that they would like to take over ELOP completely. And so what their goal is, is to serve as many kids as possible. And so they are having to hire their staff to then be able to support their goal of as many kids as possible. We have expressed the need to them of, we need to know as soon as possible, right, of how many you can serve, so then we can decide, is there still a need at sites? We can meet our minimums, and do you district have space? A couple of examples, we have Osborne Elementary School, right? We run an ACES program there, so it has 90 kids, and we have a lot of kids on the waiting list, so we know there's a need. Historically, it was just ACES and just PLAY. We are continuing to run ACES there still with 90 participants. They're going to be running ELOP, and so what they have to determine is there space for a third program, which would then be that PLAY program. So space is one thing. In some of them, and I don't want to speak for them because it's kind of an ever-changing conversation, right? I want to share tonight what we know, staying in our lane with our programs. They have expressed a desire to serve, one, as many kids as possible. They have obligations as to the order in which they're to serve. They're supposed to be starting with unduplicated students and giving them priority. If, I'm going to throw an example out, if there are 100 kids that register for Walnut Elementary's after-school program, and let's just say 40 of them are unduplicated, but they have enough staff to serve 100, then they would go into the next layer, serve the unduplicated, and then serve the duplicated population. So what that means for us is, we need to know how many still have a need, right? And then are those minimums met as well as the space? We want to be smart in our decisions, one, time and money to hire on part-time staff, right? Going through the process, we don't want to go through the process and get to August and then have wasted money if there was not a need because the district is able to serve more, nor do we want to tell our part-time staff, sorry, we no longer have a job for you. So we are awaiting their decisions at the district on their staffing levels and their registration, which I know they just closed registration, I think, last Friday. Yes, it's evolving and changing daily. So, does that answer your questions and kind of give you a little bit of?
Ms. Packwood, for the sake of people who may not understand, the ELOP is state funding that was coming to us through TUSD?
So the school districts in the state of California are the ones that are receiving the funding. So the school district partnered with us to run the program daily, yes.
So if we?
They, the district, then paid us. We had an agreement in place to serve 910 students this school year.
So if they're going to keep the money, provide the service, and we decide that we're going to provide some other portion of that service, then that is completely consistent upon the person that is needing help? I mean, like, is a parent paying for it entirely and not the city? How's that work?
So in the event that we, there's a need for PLAY program, right? It's in our user fees, so those fees are established. It is a fee-based program. Yes, families would be responsible for payment. However, the good news is, we have grant funding. We are a recipient of CDBG grant funds, in addition to various donations that we've received through the decades, to be able to help families and offset those costs.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I was going to ask, you said, how many kids got served last year, 900?
This current school year, we are in contract to serve 910 students. Yeah, and I can, with ACES, we average about 1,500 students on a daily basis.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Right, now we have the public participation, and I have some cards filled out here. You have three minutes. There's a timer there, timer there. And I would ask that we just get your point, but try not to use profanity if you can because there are people who are watching this that are children and family-friendly. Jason Freitas. He left? Okay. Elaine Tate?
Hi, my name is Elaine Tate. I'm here to talk about We Care. You already know the history of the organization, so I'm not going to get into that. But it's amazing what $1 would have, could have done for this organization. I've been working with it for probably eight or nine years through Salvation Army, Women's Auxiliary, and we provide meals. The organization runs on a shoestring. And our country is getting rid of so many agencies that give hope and money to these kind of people, this kind of organization. Where do we turn to to get support now? Humanity is the quality of being kind, thoughtful, and sympathetic toward others. Where has the humanity gone out of Trilock? 50 men will be on the streets next year, next month, because our last feeding is due 12. 50 men who no longer have bathrooms, a place to sleep, or food. Where are they going to go? The number one cause of homelessness, according to my representative, is lack of affordable housing, which, as we all know, in Trilock, it's not there. I mean, it's either city, state, federal. There's no housing. Let's not be like the federal government. Let us care about humanity. Once again, humanity is the quality of being kind, thoughtful, sympathetic, and supportive. And the homeless population are human beings. We have to remember that. They are human beings. Let's treat them that way. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joey Chavez. I'm the District Representative with Senator Alvarado Gill, here to issue a legislative update for this month of May. Thank you once again, Mayor Rublack, and the City Council for having me and my office. I have a couple of highlights here that highlight the senators' fight for public safety and community resilience in the legislature in Sacramento. First of all, I want to highlight SB 353, which is our Farm-to-Food Bank Tax Credit Bill. It is advanced off of the Senate floor, thankfully. It is now under review in the Assembly, so one step closer to ensuring that there is a permanent tax credit in place for farmers who donate excess food to food banks. It's a fantastic measure that our senator is putting forward because she values the relationships that farmers forge with local industry and wants to ensure that we have a series of winners, the farmers, the people who are needing food, and Californian citizens overall. Next up, I want to highlight the bill status for SB 463 and 746. Although both bills focused on small water systems and drought resiliency in high-fireous areas were held in the Senate Appropriations Committee, the senator remains committed to these policy goals. And our office will continue to work closely with small water providers and special districts throughout Stanislaus County and Senate District 4 to identify alternative solutions and push for regulatory flexibility at the state level. Lastly, I wanted to call attention to a scholarship opportunity for young women within Senate District 4. Just give me a moment to pull it up on my phone. It is called the Minerva Scholarship. So the Women in California Leadership Foundation is now accepting scholarships for applications for the 2025 Minerva Scholarship Program. How many more times can I say scholarship? It means I want you, and we want you to apply. So the senator will personally select two scholarship recipients to receive the awards of $3,000 and will nominate one exceptional applicant for the prestigious Golden Minerva Scholarship, valued at $10,000. Y'all, the deadline is coming up soon, May 31st, and we want as many applications as possible because education is one of the top priorities of our office, and we want to make sure that we get as many resources spread throughout this district. So if the public or the council have anybody else in mind, encourage them to apply. Reach out to our office. You can call us downtown at 209-576-6001, or email our legislative aide, Neilani Pitzer, at Neilani.pitzer@sen.ca.gov. That is all I have for you all. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening. I will be in the back for the next 15 minutes if you have any questions.
Justin?
Good evening, everyone. Justin Parkes again, representing the Office of Assemblyman Juan Alanis. Of course, thank you to the City of Trilock for being such a courteous host and allowing us to have our mobile district office hours here prior to your meetings once a month. Since last month, a lot has changed in the California State Legislature. Our years move quickly, even though it feels like legislature does nothing at times. We do manage to do a lot, for better or for worse. That's up to you. So I think the first and most pertinent piece of information, which may be old news to you folks now, is in regard to Assembly Bill 379, which was originally intended to increase the penalties for soliciting 16- and 17-year-olds for sex, essentially for purchasing them for sex. That bill was heavily amended on the Assembly floor, removing those provisions and pretty much knocking them down to a misdemeanor. Assemblyman Alanis publicly condemned these changes, and after some public pressure and very serious work from our office and many others in the legislature, we were able to reintroduce those repercussions to, call it what it is, Johns or sex traffickers for I'm getting texts from Patrick Shields up here, if you guys know who that guy is. He won't leave me alone. He sees me on one of your cameras. It reinstates those penalties, effectively creating a wobbler for those situations and in cases of there's a three-year gap between individuals, similar to Romeo and Juliet laws that we already have in the books. So a victory overall for public safety. And the Assemblyman's Court specifically, you folks, my counterpart, Mr. Chavez, spoke about the suspense file in the Appropriations Committee. In the Assembly, over 600 bills were considered on the suspense file. We had four of those bills, and of those four, two advanced through the suspense file, Assembly Bill 528, which ensures child exploitation evidence stays in government custody to protect victims of revictimization, and Assembly Bill 873, which is going to streamline the process for licensing as a dental assistant here in the state of California, which is, we have a very vast shortage of those healthcare workers in general, but specifically dental care assistants. Two bills were held in committee, fortunately, AB 240, which would have created a study for community college access to our rural areas. It's a very fitting, given the presentation we did earlier today, and another study bill regarding to water curtailments and how our water is sent to the ocean or isn't, especially during these wet years. So that's what we have in the Appropriations Committee. Those bills are now ready to be heard on the Assembly floor by the rest of our peers. However, we've had a number go through to the Senate, AB 310, Navea's Law, an exemption for probation officers, improving ballot counting efficiency, and access to precinct maps. Thank you.
Melissa Aiken?
Hi. First of all, thank you for your time, and I'm here today because I'd like to speak out about the homeless situation and the We Care Program. I came here as an example of whom they do help. Because before 2018, I was on the streets here in California, in Trilock, for 10 years. Three of those years, I was a full-time closing cashier for Pizza Hut, but at night, I was sleeping in abandoned houses. It's not an easy place to be, but I hope you guys all understand it's not a one reason gets you on the street situation, nor is it an easy fix to get you off. But am I not worth the effort? I feel I am, and if I hadn't had the help from them, I don't think I'd even be alive today. But since that time, I mean, they gave me an opportunity to help myself. And that's, that's hope. That's hope for anybody that finds himself there. Sorry, I don't mean to be emotional, but believe me, that's something no one wants to ever experience. It's humiliating, degrading, and there was never more humbling moment in my entire life than waking up and seeing schoolchildren walking to school and being on the sidewalk. But since that time, I've paid my bills, you know what I'm saying? I'm an active voter, registered voter, and I've even done jury duty, you know? I'm trying my best to be the best citizen I can. I think everybody deserves that chance, a little dignity, you know? Yeah, we all see the people that sit across the street over here every day. How many of us have walked up and asked them, why? Why are they there? You might find that the answers are why, you know? There's not just one reason to get somebody into that position, believe me. To wake up and want not to be there, but have to maybe go across town to even use the restroom, is a difficult thing. You see how I am today? I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for their help, you know? And I want you guys to all consider that. That $1 can go so far, you know? For people like me that just needed a chance, an opportunity to help myself. I appreciate the time for this evening.
Good evening, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. Milt Triweller, I'm a lifetime Stanislaus County resident. Earlier this month, I took a road trip to Prescott, Arizona. As I left Bakersfield and headed through the Hatchapi's, I thought about the Garden of Eden we have here in Stanislaus County. Are we going to turn it into a food desert? I hope not. We have an intellect, and we have choices, and yet a few people are choosing not to conserve the priceless resources we have. We must be good stewards for our children's descendants, since they cannot do this for themselves. They can't do it for themselves because they're too young or they haven't been born yet. There's not enough, there's not one acre of farmland in some entire states and even countries as good as the farmland in the area near Riverbank, or as the farmland in the area north of Trilock, or as the farmland in the areas all over Series, Houston, Modesto, and unincorporated Salida. Stanislaus County's farmland can grow food for hundreds of years because of the soils and the water we have in the TID and MID irrigation districts. In the climate we have here in our county, there is an abundance of poor soils and wastelands in California and our nation for the developers to build houses on, like the Altamont Pass area or the area east of Oakdale. There's also the large landmass area west of Patterson along Interstate 5, and in the Fairfield area along Highway 12. We also have the entire states of Arizona, Nevada, Utah, and New Mexico for the developers to build on. We do not want to use up the resources that will be needed for our children and future generations so that they can have food and survive. We, as our children's ancestors, must work together to preserve the best farmland in the world that we have here in Stanislaus County. By working together, we must stop the sprawl of our Stanislaus County cities. Remember, the future of children and our descendants is our responsibility. It is senseless to build houses and warehouses on the best farmland in the world. Our land areas in MID and TID districts are already fully economically developed. They're producing food for our state and our nation. This land will be able to produce food for our children and future generations for hundreds of years to come. Are we going to come to our senses and use our intellect for the survival of our children and descendants? Now is the time to shut this senseless growth down, freeze all city boundaries, and build up and not out. We also know that creating a food desert in Stanislaus County would be a stupid idea. God and nature gave us our brains to use and think with. This is a time to start using our brains and being good ancestors for our children and descendants. What else is more important in our lifetime than providing for our children and descendants? That is the most important responsibility we have as human beings, and that's what we've got to focus on. We've got to focus on saving our farmland in Stanislaus County. Thank you.
Jess Lee Burris, Sr. Okay, let's bring them back. Well, thank you. Joel or Joell? Bathroom also? Okay, okay. Pardon me? Yeah, but there's plenty of seats. Okay, so Jess Lee Burris, Sr.? Yes? Come on up, sir. Come on up, sir.
I'm here for We Care, and I got to say that it's good, and it does good work, and I'd like to see it stay open because we have nowhere else to go.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay. I am Jess Burris Senior, and I stay at We Care, and I'd like to see it stay open because I have nowhere else to go. It's a good spot.
Is that it? Okay, thank you.
That's all.
All right. Joel? Is Joel out there? Oh, there you are. Thank you. Is it Joel or Joell?
Joell.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I must please not close the We Care because it's a blessing. It's from the Bible, and one time I said, I said, I thought that I would never get there, be a homeless, and here I am. So never say never, because we all will fall in the same situation. Thank you.
Ernest Taylor?
I've been at the We Care for too long, but I've seen the people that help and could help, and some of them need a little more help. It's helped me a lot, and I try to think of a way to make things better. Don't just give up.
Thank you. Glenn?
Counsel, staff. I'm here to follow up on some questions I asked a month or two ago. One of them was Chief Haddon regarding the number of incidents that have been taken for the facility on Colorado. I understand it takes thirty days for you to make a phone call back, but in any case, I'll be waiting on that. I also questioned the Brainwave program that you paid, what, some $600,000 for? What has been the follow-up? How many people use that? How many funds are left? You don't know? I'm looking for accountability.
It's personnel, sir. We can't answer that.
I hear accountability, accountability, accountability. I'm looking for some accountability. So I'm not asking their names, I'm just asking how many? How much of that fund is still left?
We can have staff find that out for you. Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know, staff would know, right? Okay.
I also questioned the funding that was given to D.J. Franson for Economic Downtown Development. Well, that's great. D.J. came back one time, so one year ago. But then, what was it, last month, when your economic development person won a great big award for doing the same thing? So I'm questioning, what is D.J.'s response? What is he doing with that same money that you're paying your, my economic development person?
Okay.
And then I guess, I've read several times about your plan for homelessness. I assume that with your decisions that you made regarding not wanting to fund We Care, that you were having. Can you share that with us? I'll be waiting for that after you.
Julie? Julie?
Counsel, Mary. I'm back again, because I don't think I communicated correctly the last week when I asked the question. I, and as a past teacher, I tell myself as the person that did some of the communication. So I know we all learn differently, so I'm going to try to be clearer this time, and I know some of us are fragile, so I want to speak to those folks. And I want you to see this as Turlock and the downtown area. And I want you to see this as We Care, and it has forty-nine gumballs in here, and these forty-nine gumballs represent our forty-nine clients. Now, right now, in our area, this is We Care, and they're in the We Care facility, and there's not a lot of bother to the surrounding area. Now, look what happens when we let those people leave the facility. Oh, my goodness! It's like a science experiment. Look at all the homeless people all over downtown Turlock. See that? They're everywhere, but if we leave We Care open, right, then look at that! There's our homeless folks, and there's downtown not overrun by all these people. So I'm trying to be as clear as possible, because I still don't understand why you do this when you can do this for a dollar. Can anyone answer that question? Oh, you're so smart, Mr. Petralakis, I bet you can't. No? City Manager Barrego, can you answer that question? Ms. Phillips? Mayor Buble? Moniz? Vixel? Ms. Abrams? Who can answer that question for me? Because I feel like I did a good job explaining this time. I taught third grade in Anne Junior High. So where's the answer? How is this bad and this good? Are you there? Is there an answer? No. Okay, well, I will keep trying. I was a good teacher. I'll be back. Larry Richards? Larry Richards? Larry Richards? Okay. There you go.
Hi, I just wanted to say that We Care's been really good to me. The last five years or so, I've relied on them. I've had five cars, they were all stolen, but I was, I had a place to go and lay at night, and not only that, but they've become my family. I love each one of the people that are staff there. Carol's like my mom to me, Cory like a sister, Eddie like a brother, Caden, Devon, Ryan, they're all my family now. If I lose that place, I won't be just losing my Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles blanket. They had a nice bed they got me. Thank you.
Nick Ludlow?
I just wanted to come up and speak about the We Care as well. When I leave here, I'm going to go to sleep there tonight. I'm twenty-six years old, and I've never been homeless in my life. I got into some trouble when I was eighteen, and it came back to bite me in the butt seven years later. And I'm doing everything I can to rehabilitate myself and meet the terms of my probation. I lost my job and my home really quickly and ended up at We Care. I was hopeless before that, I had nowhere to go. Can't stay with grandpa because he lives in a senior place, don't have anyone around here other than him. How much does it cost for you guys when you have to scrape up a dead person off the street? That's what happens when people get hopeless. So closing that place takes hope away from people, takes away where am I going to sleep in thirty days? For a dollar? That's really not fair to me. And then there's the people that care about the people that are in there. Stress kills people, and they're stressing because they know that there's nothing they can do to help these people. What are you doing to help us? There is twenty people in there that are over fifty-five, thirteen of them are over sixty-two. What are they going to do? Where are they going to go? What are you guys going to do for them? Otherwise, you guys are going to be picking bodies up off the street, and that's all I have to say.
Douglas?
I'm also from We Care. I used to work for twelve years, and now I'm a guest. And it wasn't a drugstore call, I lost my job, I lost my house, and at my age, it's hard to find a job because they don't want people my age, they want young people. And I just, like I said, don't, we, there's nowhere we're going to go. I have nobody to fall back to, I have nothing, just me. That's why I say thank you.
Deacon? Is he out there, Deacon? Oh. There you are.
Hello, my name is Deacon James Russell. I'm here to represent Sacred Heart Catholic Church in Turlock on behalf of keeping, the possibility of keeping We Care open. For me, from what I've seen, from me being able to serve it, provides shelter for them, provides a place for our youth groups that I've been involved in to help serve them also, and get the pride in seeing the kids serve them and seeing where they could be or could not be, and to make the better choices in life that you hear a lot of them struggling with. So as they've already said, it gives them place, it gives them a community, it gives them a safe place to go. I know if I had to go into the vulnerability, I also served twenty-two years and had to go into survivability mode, I don't know. I hear a lot of these comments, I've been blessed and I have to be there. I've done training to be there, but there's always light at the end of the tunnel. I only had to do it for a week, not on the streets for years, months. So that being said, just like I said, on behalf of the Sacred Heart, they want to continue communicating and serving it. I know I was at All Saints for quite a bit of years, and I know they, the groups there, the youth groups, the youth council, the squires want to serve it, and I think it's a great honor to be able to serve it with the community, and it would be great to look to see it open, to provide a more safe place for them than just putting them out on the streets. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Mary Christopher? You guys signed together, yeah? It was you and Christopher together? Okay.
Okay, so I'm Mary Jackson, I'm reading for Christopher Sariani, who's not available to be here this evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Christopher Sariani, and I'm a resident of Turlock, president and CEO of the United Way of Stanislaus County, and a member of Turlock Sunrise Rotary. I'm speaking tonight because I'm deeply concerned about the city's decision not to allocate any funding to the We Care Men's Shelter with the last grant. That decision didn't just cut off local support, it also blocked the shelter's ability to access two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand state funding through the county, funding that could have helped stabilize a critical resource for our unhoused neighbors. I want to speak plainfully and respectfully. I understand the frustration that comes with the challenges of homelessness, especially for our downtown businesses and residents, but removing services is not a solution. I hope you're everyone's paying attention. It's simply shifting the problem often in more dangerous and costly directions. Let's be honest, hoping people in, helping people in crisis will leave, hoping people in crisis will leave town if we stop helping them is not a strategy, it's avoidance, and it's not reflective of the values I believe Turlock stands for. At United Way, we work every day with partners across the region to connect people with shelter, care, and support services. We know this work is complex, but we also know that housing stability and human connections are what people, what help people move forward. And as a member of Turlock Sunrise Rotary, I've served meals at the We Care Shelter for the past two years. I've sat across from the men who rely on it. I've seen their gratitude. I've heard their stories. These are people who want to rebuild their lives. To strip away their only source of shelter is not just ineffective, it's inhumane. I urge you to reconsider how the city supports the We Care Shelter, and to think of long-term compassionate solutions that reflect our shared responsibility to one as a community. Thank you.
I have no other cards for public participation. John, did you want to? Did you want to speak, sir? Okay. Wow, there you go. There's probably another.
Listen, I, I was going to talk on something else tonight, but whatever. I, you know, I think you guys made a mistake on, on, on We Care and things, that, you know, for decades, I've been, I feed people, I collect groceries, I make sandwiches, and all that kind of good stuff, and it's just a little, it's nothing. It's, it's, it's something, but it isn't anything. But, you know, what we, what we do i- is, is, is something, but, and I, I'm going to say it again, the governor's out there telling everybody how crappy a job you guys have done, and we gave you twenty-four billion dollars, and you haven't solved the problem. Well, the problem is, is that the money that's been spent has just been outrageously ineffective of what they're doing. Listen, if we want to spend twenty-four billion, you should have something to show for it. You know, the other day, it was Riverbank turned down a twenty-million-dollar grant for a hundred housing units, six-hundred-and-fifty square foot. I know, I think it was six-hundred square foot, but the, but they wanted, you know, Riverbank to give up, you know, thirty-one thousand dollars per unit of their money and, and everything. So the effective cost for a, for a square foot, these, these units are going to cost three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for a manufactured house. Now, somebody's making a lot of money, because, man, for three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, you should be able to buy a twelve, a two-thousand-square-foot manufactured house. That's the one thing I just, you know, just keeps me up. You know, if you're going to have money, spend it wisely. This is a comprehensive thing, there's all sorts of programs. You know, I gave you guys one last year down in Austin, Texas. Well, you know, taxes, whatever, that's run by fishes and loaves and everything else like that, that got people into small units, they're up to five-hundred people of formerly homeless people, housing and everything else like that for fifty thousand bucks. And they had a lot of volunteers and a lot of contributions from the community to do all this stuff. But unless you have the, all the wraparound services and whatever, this is just a patch. And, you know, you might as well do a little patch, just like I, I'll patch up a tire, try to get along with it and everything else, but it ain't going to solve the problem.
Okay, I don't have any other cards, and everyone has spoken, no, Mr. Patterson? No? Who are you pointing at? I'm sorry, Julie. Somebody outside? Okay. No running in the hall. Did I mess up? I could have. Come on up. Did you fill out a card? Did I mess up? I, I think we were going back and forth with theirs, too, and I passed one of my, apologize.
Hello, I'm Daniel Marino, and like, one of, one of the clients of, of We Care. Last year, because the We Care was open, my brother, on July seventeenth, sustained a major heart attack. Without We Care being there, he could might have another heart attack and probably die. He's the only family I have, so put it very bluntly, please reconsider to, to not shut down We Care, because we need it. I mean, I need it, my brother needs it, half the people at the We Care need it, the staff, you know, some people that have child support have no jobs because they're closing down. Just thank you for... Just thank you for having me. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jess Burris Jr. I just recently got released from California State Prison. We Care opened their doors for me. They had their doors open for my dad for over a year and a half. He's seventy-seven years old. I was born in Turlock, California, at Emmanuel Hospital. The first Emmanuel Hospital that was ever here, my dad was born in in nineteen forty-seven. My family has been a big part of this community. My grandfather was also a service inside the World War II and lived here. We're also part of Holy Brown Ministry. We do the outreach program out of the Columbia Park. We try to help out as much as we can. Due to the unfortunate circumstances that led me into prison, I got to actually see what it is to have to be rehabilitated. It was a big-time game of it. I thought technology was the best thing in the world. But compassion, that's number one. God taught us to have unconditional love for each other. Okay? So compassion is one thing that We Care shows us. Compassion. They showed me compassion coming in. They didn't have to open their doors to me. But they allowed that. And every day since I've been out, I have been progressively helping out in the community. I'm feeding other homeless people. I'm collecting rewards off of the McDonald's. I'm taking the food that I get from there and I'm giving it to somebody else that's in need. That's compassion. That's something that this world really doesn't have. Common sense compassion is a commodity in this world. Okay? A commodity. Ketchup packet, mustard packet. You don't see those running around all day long. You don't see people with compassion, with hearts. We Care has showed more compassion than I've seen from any other facility here in Turlock helping out the homeless. That one dollar can make a lot. And I want to volunteer at We Care, but if you guys shut it down, how can I actually volunteer to change lives? How can I make that difference in Turlock? How can I help people rehabilitate? Turlock Gospel Rehabilitation Center doesn't offer that. We Care does. That's the one thing that you guys need to see. If you come down there, you'll actually see these lives. They're not just the same people that you see every day, sleeping on the sidewalk. Some of us actually go out and help other people. Some of us actually get involved with Liz at Helping Hands and clean up. Some of us actually do do things that you guys don't see every day. But that's the difference between the ones that want to rehabilitate and the ones that don't. And that's the ones you guys should look forward to. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I'm gonna close our public comment and we're gonna move on. To consent calendar, there is a green sheet on the minutes, item B, so if you make a motion, please.
Motion to approve with the green sheet.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
We have motion two seconds. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monet?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Boukla?
Yes. Passed with a five-zero. Final readings. I have, uh, three, let's see, let's start with, uh, we have the local street permit fee, uh, for National Night Out. And so there's a resolution, two resolutions and an ordinance. It's a final reading, so I'll open it to the public. Should there be anyone wishing to speak on it? Is there something you wanted to cover? Okay, just wanna be ready. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. Bring it back. Are there any comments for?
Just, uh, a question that I know the answer to, but can you highlight that National Night Out fees are waived for at least the next ten years when we look at it again?
That is correct. Um, we, we basically, we redid Articles One and Article Twos of the Code Five Point Two. So tonight before you, you have two resolutions and an ordinance. The first resolution is adopting the, uh, the street closure permit fees, which, um, include the renewal and the late fees. And then the second resolution is directing the city manager or designated waive fees for local street closures or applications associated with the National Night Out event.
Anything else?
No, I'll move to approve on the two resolutions and the ordinance.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion. A second, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monet?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Boukla?
Yes. Passed with a five-zero. My iPad just went dead. Uh, okay, so, on to item, uh, B. It's the second final reading for Firehouse. I will open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on it? Okay, we'll close, uh, the item for public participation. Bring it back.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion two seconds. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monet?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Boukla?
Yes. Passed with a five-zero. All right, item C, second final reading for JDI Farms. I'll open it to the public. Closing public comment?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monet?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Boukla?
Yes, passed with five-zero. Second final reading for Perfect Union. I'll open it to the public. Closing public comment?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion two seconds. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monet?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Boukla?
Yes, passed with five-zero. Public hearings are none. Action items, uh, ten A will be Director Fisher adopting the water master plan prepared by Coro engineers.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. Um, I'm here this evening to request your support for the adoption of the updated water master plan and development, development partnership with Coro engineers. With me tonight is Utilities Manager Carlos. And, um, he will, he'll go through the presentation, but the resolution before you accomplishes two things tonight. adopts the updated water master plan and the city's strategic planning document for the water systems, as well as determines that this action exempt from California Environmental Quality Act SEQA under Section fifteen-two-sixty-two of the SEQA guidelines as it pertains to solely to planning and feasibility analysis. With that, I'll give it to Carlos.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you for allowing me for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Carlos Garo, Utilities Manager, representing the Utilities Department with Municipal Services. This evening, I'll be presenting you with an overview of our water master plan, outlining key findings and recommendations that will guide our efforts over the next several years. Our goal is to ensure our infrastructure continues to meet the needs of the community while planning responsibly for long-term growth and sustainability, and I'll do my best to keep this brief. Tonight's presentation will cover the following topics. Project objectives, what we set out to accomplish. Uh, system overview and look at our existing infrastructure and operations. Uh, system analysis and proposed improvements, what the data shows and what improvements are needed. And capital improvement plan, how we plan to implement and fund these recommendations. All right, so the first one will be project objectives. So the project objectives, uh, recommendations for reliable water service through build-out of the city's general plan. Update previous master plan to incorporate revised build-outs and demand projections and consider the impact of new SRWA supply source and develop a prioritized capital improvement plan to address existing and projected distribution system choke points. So a major goal of this water master plan was to develop a revised demand projections for the city and to integrate the latest assumptions impact of the new SRWA surface water supply into the master plan. The master plan also aimed to provide recommendations to address ongoing water quality challenges in the city's wells as, as well as fire flow conditions and storage. So the system overview. Currently, the distribution system summary is two-hundred-and-eighty-three miles of water main lines and sixteen active groundwater wells. The supply from SRWA and four storage tanks. So the most significant change in the system since the previous water master plan was amended in 2016 has been the implementation of the local system improvements project, which has significantly increased system reliability. Ongoing challenges related to the city's groundwater well still exist, however, and are rapidly evolving. The master plan also incorporates the latest information related to groundwater well supply. So demand projections considered build-out. Uh, the water demand projections were revised to reflect recent trends in water conservation in the city and the future growth potential within the city's planning boundary. The future demand projections included a detailed review of planned developments with the city's planning department, as well as infill development and expansion beyond the current city limits. At build-out, the city's average day demand is projected to increase by roughly sixty percent from seventeen MGD, million gallons a day, to twenty-seven point one million gallons a day. Uh, system analysis and proposed improvements. System performance was evaluated under existing and future peak demand conditions. A comprehensive evaluation of the city's existing and future distribution was conducted using a calibrated hydraulic model of the system. The analysis considered the distribution system hydraulics under peak hour demands and fire flow conditions. In addition, a robust supply and storage evaluation was conducted to plan out future SRWA expansion, well construction, and storage needs. So water system improvements. Uh, the system improvements provide a comprehensive plan for existing and future water system needs. Major improvements include projects to increase fire flow capacity in the system. The addition of treatment at wells with water quality concerns and water meter replacements, which is huge right now. A new tank and pump station in the northwest area of the system is also recommended. Continued water system improvements. Uh, long-term improvements include expansion of the SRWA supply and associated transmission improvements, additional well supply, and new backbone infrastructure to, to extend the water system to new growth areas. Am I going too fast?
Never faster, no, I'm just kidding.
Capital improvement plan. So the total projected cost of the recommended capital improvement, uh, improvement projects is two-hundred-and-seventy-three point nine million. A detailed breakdown of these figures shows that approximately fifty-nine percent, or about a hundred-and-sixty-one point nine million, is directly associated with accommodating future growth within the city of Turlock. These growth-related improvements are essential to ensure the city's infrastructures are prepared to meet the demands of new residential, commercial, and industrial development. The remaining forty-one percent, or roughly a hundred-and-eleven point seven million, is dedicated to addressing existing system deficiencies, regulatory compliance, assess, asset renewal, and improving operational efficiency. It was not going down. Sorry. So, the, this investment strategy balances the need between, uh, to maintain high level of service for current residents while preparing our systems for long-term demands of a growing community. So, that kind of wraps it up, but I just want to say thank you, Mayor and Council members, for the opportunity to present today. And I look forward to your guidance on our water system improvements and continued collaboration as we move forward.
Thank you. Good job.
Good job.
Questions?
And Director Fisher, in the, can you go back to the pie chart? I don't have it on my computer screen right now. The forty-something percent of what are, you know, the existing requirements that were, existing improvements, rather, that we need to do, some of those we're already working on, right? Like with the wellhead treatments?
Yeah, that's correct.
We're well on our way?
Yeah, we have, we have a couple of projects that aren't going right now. We're doing an arsenic treatment that's gonna go out for design um, in the next couple of, probably in the next, next month or so. Um, that'll alleviate one of our wells from be having to report on. We still, and following that, we have one more well that we need to do the same for.
And that's the, like, the biggest, that's the most expensive items in there, right? Treating the wells. The rest of it is more manageable in the near term financially?
And, and what you saw here tonight, we, we need this to do our, um, cost of service study. Um, so we have the CIP and they build out. The other thing that, that is dear and dear to, that needs to get done really soon is we need to look at replacing our automated metering system. Um, we don't really have a great forward-facing portal, um, which gives us the tools to, to give our, puts it in the hand of our residents so they can work on their own conservation rather than, you know, waiting for, you know, the state to come down in a case of severe drought and mandate any type of conservation. So those, those two items, and then with the priority five, fire flows, there's thirteen items there that we need to get done in the very near future.
Are you talking about individual home meters?
That's correct. Yeah, we have a system, yeah, that's about, um, I'm gonna say eighteen years old. Um, they all have a little battery and that battery is about eighty-three bucks. Um, plus whatever staff time it takes to go out and install it and then the admin time that goes and takes and configure it, the system, remove the old one. Um, so, you know, they're, they're failing at a rate that, um, it's, it's not sustainable for us. You know, we're looking to hire part-time to do meter reading at this point because there's so many of them failing. So that's one of the priority projects we have. And we'll incorporate that into our cost of service study and our future master, you know, in our, in our, in our rates.
Other questions? Okay, we'll open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Well, it's quite obvious that this is a very important, uh, presentation. I think we're still not grasping reality. And I actually gave us a good solution at the beginning of public participation, and that is freeze the city limits. And all I do is I continually see new charts on how we can make our city larger. Why is this so important? It's so important because I just took a day trip over to Prescott and their land is worthless. You could build houses on every square foot of it and you would not take out one bit of farmland. We are surrounded by farmland. Fortunately, we are tending to the south, which is the worst-conditioned farmland, but it's still better than any other place in, in many states and countries. We're not being realistic. And what is the solution? The solution is all we have to do is save our land here in Stanislaus County. We don't have to save Madera County's land because they're gonna have to follow their land. The counties down south of us, down south of Stanislaus County, are gonna have to follow it because they have to cut back on nine-hundred-thousand acre-feet of water and take it out of production. And this means acres, actually acres of production, that they're gonna have to take out of production. We're gonna have to fill in that production because we do have the water with Don Pedro and MID and TID. We have what we need. They don't have what they need. So we need to be the wise ones. We need to be the ones, I'm digressing a little bit on this. I understand that because this is a water report. But we have to look at the overall picture. I do like, Mr. Fisher, the idea that you did can talk about conservation because that's gonna be an issue regardless of what we do. But overall, we just have to be responsible. We have to think about our descendants, our children. And that's the point. So, let's continue to do that. Let's work the best we can to achieve something that will be sustainable for our children and descendants, the most important thing we have, and it's our responsibility. So let's work on that along with the other things we're working on. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? John?
I just had a couple of quick questions. You said that you're gonna have to replace all of the, uh, water meters, all of them? Is it because of the battery or is it just that the quality wasn't good or, or, or whatever?
The current system we have is an Itron. It's an RFID goes through, um, it's no longer supported. Um, there, there are a lot of, you know, they still have parts for them. But every time that we have to go and maintain those things, it's a pretty big deal ordeal. And they're just not, um, working in the water space anymore. They're not accepting any new water clients, which tells me, you know, they're on their way out.
And then the other thing, the second part is the future improvements, uh, city build-out. Is that something that, that's for new housing and, and new construction and things like that? And does that mean that I have to pay for somebody else's improvements or something like that?
No, the, those improvements will be covered under the, under the capacity fees and development impact fees. Um, it simply just, this simply tells us what we need to put in to make sure that we can meet the demand, and it's the demand in the general plan. Uh, but it does include, um, county enclaves, which we, which we refer to as county islands.
Okay, we'll close the public comment, bring it back.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Blueback?
Yes. Passes five-zero, thank you, gentlemen, good job. All right, Director Moreno, approving an agreement with ClearSource Financial Services. Blah, 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 feed, study, co, cost allocation. Did that cover it? It's a lot, it's a lot. That's right.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. Um, before I turn it over to our consultant, um, Mr. Terry Madison is going to help us with our study. Um, I'll give you a quick overview of what we're looking at. Uh, this is the start of a comprehensive user fee study and a cost allocation plan. What this plan is, is for our services that we provide. So, you briefly heard them talk about impact fees. Those are slightly different, those are development-driven, these are service-driven. So, he'll go over what that looks like, uh, and what the study is going to be doing.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council for allowing me to speak with you. I will be brief. Um, as the Finance Director mentioned, this is, uh, what we'd call a user fee study and a overhead cost allocation plan. And the city collects service-based fees for things like, um, construction permitting, entitlement review, reviews for requests to encroach in the right-of-way, um, specialized, uh, like reserved use of city spaces and things like that. And then, um, cities also conduct what we call overhead cost allocation plans to understand the central service support costs that are, um, sort of linked to your outward-facing services. And so, both of these studies are commonly conducted by, by cities throughout the state that are conducted by your neighbors, Southern California, Northern California, and throughout the Central Valley. Um, just by way of reminder, commonly, we think of it as communities typically use their limited general tax resources as much as possible to fund services that provide broad, community-wide benefit. We would think of these most commonly as public safety services, public work services, general park maintenance services, and they use mechanisms like fees and charges when they're providing a direct service, when they see a direct receiver of service. And as I mentioned, most commonly, we would think of this as like plan review or permitting or specialized inspection services. The reason cities perform these types of studies that, that Turlock is considering, the number-one reason they perform them is to ensure compliance with legal requirements because these are fees and not taxes, they're governed by the California Constitution and the California Government Code. We want to make sure we're in compliance with those codes. Um, it offers an opportunity to relieve the general fund. When you collect a service from the receiver of service, by definition, you are freeing up some other city resource to be used for a different service. And I think this final bullet point is important. When we, um, recover, uh, our cost of service, it helps us to continue to meet the service level expectation of the community. Uh, I'm here from ClearSource, we do similar work, uh, throughout the state. We do user regulatory fee studies, overhead cost allocation plans, fee schedule updates, internal service fund rate studies, and so forth. Um, we do it exclusively in California, um, and we do it for, for communities throughout Southern California. We work in Northern California and Central Valley. The anticipated timeline for this project is about a hundred-and-fifty days, so we would anticipate that information will be ready for council consideration at the end of two thousand twenty-five and beginning of two thousand twenty-six. Council could review the information and then determine how best to move forward. Thank you so much for your consideration, and if you have any questions or feedback, I'm happy to receive them.
I do, um, previously, we've, we've had situations where something, we will charge more on a fee than it costs a purchased item. Are you looking at those as well? Because that, that just doesn't look right to the public. That'll be something you pay attention to as well?
So, I, I think that, that's a great question. The best way to, uh, answer that, I think, is our study, uh, sort of does two steps. The first is it identifies what is the city's actual cost of performing the service? And then secondarily, there's a philosophical question of, do I want to recover all of that cost? Or a portion of that cost? And in cases like you're describing, it may be logical to say, I understand the cost of service is X, but because of any, any particular reason, in your case, the actual service, the actual product itself doesn't even cost what it costs us to review it or regulate it, um, we would make a decision as a council to philosophically target less than full cost recovery. So, that is part of this study, you will have that opportunity. We want to understand what it actually costs us, and then secondarily, make decisions about, do I want to recover all of that or a portion of that?
Thank you.
Yeah, just to kind of jump on that a little bit. So, the, the report that comes back, we'll have a lot of dialogue with council as far as what's in the document. We could also look at other cities to see what those fee structures look like, too. Not necessarily to give a, a comprehensive look at everybody's fees, it's more just to give a, a little bit of a base, some sort of general information for council, but really just looking at our city, what our costs are so we can really be cost recovery in a sense though, because we're not supposed to make money in a sense of the way. We're supposed to be cost, we are services to the public. We can only recover costs up to that dollar amount. So, this report is really, but very important in a sense of the way, so we really know what that number is, right? So, that's one thing we really need to get the study, study done.
Just curious to know when the last time something like was done? And how often is it to be judicious about this kind of thing?
So, any financial study similar to this nature is usually good rule of thumb, five years. When's the last time we done one? There've been some small ones done, but this is a full citywide services one, and that has been done for twenty years plus.
Regarding the kind of two-step process that you talk about, the first, the analysis of how much does it cost? Um, perhaps this question for both of you, but do we learn along the way some nuggets of where the process or procedure needs, um, improvement? And, you know, is that, is that something that you hand over then to the city manager's office to really inform the decisions we need to make thereafter? Does that make sense?
It totally makes sense to me, and I, just to be clear, this is not an organizational efficiency study or an organizational assessment. This doesn't tell us how many F T Es we should be staffing. This says, uh, based on the way Turlock does work today, your current adopted spending patterns, um, and, and so forth, what does it cost you to provide service today? If you, um, modified the organization in the future, if you wanted to assume some sort of process efficiency, we would need direction for that, but we do not examine that.
Yeah, one thing that we could help, um, analyze this too as well, when you come up with that number or what it really looks like, and you start looking at other fee structures, you can start seeing some imbalance and really start assessing, why is it doing that? So, we can come up with a realistic answer, and so we can assess that, that information. So, for example, if you see a number start to skew way out of balance for whatever reason, you really start to look internally on what that process is and how we can make it more efficient.
And that sort of analysis comes after getting the report or in, along the way?
So, I guess the best way to put it is the information and data are key, right? So that we can look at, we have a unit of measurement to be able to, to assess.
Great, let's open it to public, anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Blueback?
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes five-zero, thank you, thank you for coming. Uh, item C, Ms. Figueroa. Good evening. Let us put you at the end, huh? Note to self.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council and community members. The item before you is a request for approval of the three-year agreement with Stanislaus County to continue participating as a member of the Stanislaus Home Consortium for a period of three years for the federal fiscal year of October first, two thousand twenty-six, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-nine. Per HUD guidelines, the agreement must be submitted one year in advance of the period. Per federal regulation, a participating consortium in the home program must have formal agreements between the lead agency and its subrecipients that basically establishes administrative policies and procedures, performance standards, and guidelines for funding specific programs and projects. This agreement does not commit the city to any action aside from being a part of the consortium and retaining the option of applying for funding should the city choose to do so in the future. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, questions, comment, or questions on the process? All right, we'll open it to public, anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, we call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Blueback?
Yes, passes five-zero, thank you, Ms. Figueroa. All right, Director Sims. Chief, did you want to do this one, too?
He wants to go play turn eleven.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, and members of the public. The item before you tonight is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute all documents necessary in the form approved by the city attorney to complete the sale of surplus property located at one forty South First Street. On March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, city council adopted resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash zero four-two, declaring the property as surplus in accordance with Government Code, Section five-four-two-two-one. In compliance with the Surplus Land Act, city submitted the required documentation to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, H C D. On April twenty, on April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, H C D issued a letter confirming that the property qualifies as exempt surplus land and is therefore exempt from the Act's notification and offering requirements. This determination allows the city to move forward with the sale process without additional compliance steps under the Surplus Land Act. Approving this resolution tonight will authorize the interim city manager to execute all documents necessary in the form approved by the city attorney to negotiate and complete the sale of surplus property located at one forty South First Street. And am I available for questions, should there be any?
Questions? All right, we'll open it to the public.
As I looked this up, I noticed that, uh, this property is actually behind the property that's on the street. So, it looks to me like there are two actual addresses there, and we're only covering the back one. Have we already sold the front one, or how, is there a relationship between those? Since there, one is on the street and the other is in the back right across the street here. Could you kind of explain that, and are they two properties? Has one already been sold? And, uh, that would be my questions, thank you.
It's, uh, one property. It's one address, one property, uh, all open from street to the back.
All right, we'll close public comment.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Vixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Blueback?
Nope, it passes four-one, thank you for your, uh, support there. All right, city manager, what do you have, ma'am? Pressed the button, did you have anything?
All the staff reports are included in your agenda packet. I just want to say, if you, uh, were around Saturday to see the pool open out in the neighborhood, it was a great event, um, great to see families and all the work that went on there, uh, was a lot of fun. I get to see all the stuff that goes on every day that staff is doing, and I promise that I want to bring lists of that, to tell you some of that. I also want to thank the staff that really worked hard on balancing a budget without cuts to services. We know we've got more work to do, but that first round was, uh, really important. And I want to reiterate that, uh, the staff, um, in Parks and Rec have really been working, at least as long as I've been here, um, to really be ready for this ELOP change that Unified School District's doing. And there's a lot of concern that they're not going to be able to ramp up in the way that families are expecting. So, I really appreciate the work that the staff's been doing, uh, to communicate that out without bonking anyone else, but to be able to, uh, let people know that we're working as quickly as we can with the school district and, and balanced against waiting for them to make decisions. So, thank you.
All right, and we'll start down at the line, council member comments, announcements, and/or future items.
All right, thank you. Um, to piggyback a little bit off of what City Manager Borrego said, um, regarding the budget, a lot of, a lot of staff time goes into creating it, and, you know, on our budget, on our agenda, rather, today, you know, the item was engage in discussion, and I, I think that our budget process should really be a time where we can get into the details of what's in it, um, even in a year when there's not a lot of room to change anything because, you know, that's the time where we can communicate to the public what we are doing because there's a lot of good stuff happening in there that we are funding that, um, it, it gets lost if you don't know how to look through all of those, those sheets. So, um, whether it's the next round or in future years, I would like to have maybe a little bit more of a robust public process where we can explain what our budget is because that's what makes, you know, that's our guiding document, and that's how we can hopefully express what our policy goals are. Um, and with that, one of the items that was listed on the, uh, budget rec, augmentations recommended for approval was, um, some increased work that's happening at the Armory Facility. And I would like to have at some point an item come back specifically to talk about what that property, what potential it has there, how it's being used, how it could be used. Um, because it's, you know, again, it's on one of our lists of city-owned space that I think we need to put into the best possible use. Thank you.
Well, like I say, I'm sorry that I missed the Columbia Pool opening in your cannonball. I was out of town for a niece's wedding, but I understand that it went over well, yeah, and I, it was covered well in the media and, and, uh, looked like everybody had a good time. I'm, I'm happy that it's finally there, thank you.
It was, you're forgiven for not being there, by the way. Uh, it was a beautiful day, so great to see our families out there, and I just want to say thank you to all the staff whose, maybe their name didn't get specifically called out loud, but for all of the hard work that went on here at City Hall to get our pool back open, I am eternally grateful, and I appreciate everybody that worked on the project.
Um, Nathan for a part.
Okay, um, and I just want to congratulate, uh, Yost Engineering, who got their first national, uh, award because of SRWA. It was pretty significant for them, and it's pretty cool for us. Uh, as well, I would say that the Armory, I, I don't want to put any money into it unless we have a purpose in selling it or revamping it, but just for storage, I think it's a waste of money. And, uh, I think that we need to be more cognizant about where we spend our money and what we get out of it. Uh, and then we have closed session.
Uh, A is conference with labor negotiators, California Government Code five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six-A. Agency designated representative is interim city manager Susan Borrego. Employee organization is Turlock Management Association Public Safety and Turlock Associated Police Officers. B is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, California Government Code five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-D-two. Potential cases is one. C is conference with rural property negotiators, California Government Code five-four-nine-five-six-point-eight. Property is one thirty-two South Broadway, Turlock. Agency negotiator is interim city manager Susan Borrego. Negotiating parties is Pierce Timothy and Donna Pierce family, two thousand twenty-one trust, under negotiation price and terms of payment for the purchase of the property. And last is a public employee performance evaluation, California Government Code five-four-nine-five-seven-B-one, for the city attorney.
All right, and we shall report out, should there be something. Otherwise, we'll see you in a couple of weeks, thank you.
Thumbs up. There we go. All right, we are back from closed session. There's nothing to report and so this is adjourned.
Bingo.